Good evening and welcome to the town of Cordera, Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Boyer, Chair Chase, Vice Chair Rizzo, and Commissioner Bandell.
Here.
Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So there's one gentleman in the room, and if he's not going to comment on that, we'll say no to in-room public comment and see if Tracy has any hands up.
No hands up, churches.
Okay, so hands down, then, public comment is over. And we'll move on to our first new hearing tonight. So this is a sign permit hearing for 436 Cordera Madera Town Center, Permit Amendment Application PL 23-0015 to amend the previously approved sign permit design review for signage at the T-Mobile store at 436 Cordera Madera Town Center, including replacement of black awnings with magenta awnings. So I don't remember what year it was, but I do remember this. So Tracy, it's in your hands.
Thanks, Chair Chase and Vice Chair Rizzo, commissioners. As Peter stated, tonight, we're discussing a permit amendment application to amend the previously approved sign permit design review or signage awnings at the T-Mobile store at Cordera Madera Town Center, including replacement of the black awnings with magenta colored awnings. The project site is that red icon here at the south end of the town center mall, north of Tamalpais Drive, the main entry doors to the tenant space face south to the town center south parking lot. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building, except for this. This slide is showing existing conditions. The store is just under 2,400 square feet and it's been occupied by T-Mobile since 2017. And on July 27th, 2017, the zoning administrator approved a sign permit design review for the existing T-Mobile sign, white with the magenta backer that you see here, and two black awnings with screen printed with the T-Mobile lettering on the balance. That approval is included as attachment one to the staff report. This is showing just a proposed new sign. There are applicants proposing to replace the existing illuminated sign with a new illuminated sign. Existing is 20 square feet with 18 inch letter height and proposed is 17 square feet, also with an 18 inch letter height. And the proposed sign meets the town's sign ordinance. The Cordera Madera Town Center has more stringent sign guidelines that they'll need to follow and are following in pursuant to those guidelines. A wall sign is a maximum of 25 square feet in area for a tenant of this size with a maximum letter height of 18 inches and a maximum logo height of 22 inches. And it might be apparent to you that the proposed wall sign is just updating their logo by removing several of the bullets and results in an overall reduction in total sign area for the sign ordinarily. If this application came into staff as it's designed, we would process an amendment at staff level and require the applicant to obtain a building permit. However, with this application, they're proposing a change to the storefront awnings. They're proposing to change the two black awnings to the magenta color that you see here. Attachment two is the sign drawings. I'll show a little larger for you. That's 11 by 17 in your packet. The awnings both include a screen printed T-Mobile logo, 2.1 square feet in area on the balance. The awnings are not currently illuminated. They're not proposed to be illuminated. And they'll be installed above the storefront centered above the entry doors and the display window to the left where they're visible from Tamalpais Drive, as well as obviously visible by visitors to the mall. And given the intense color of the awnings, staff and their visible, highly visible location staff is requesting planning commission feedback on the proposed awnings. Concerns center mainly around the compatibility of those awning colors with the existing color palette of the town center. This slide is just showing some of those tenant spaces on the exterior of complete photo survey that is attachment three to your staff report. I'll just selected some of those photos, but if you refer to attachment three, I'm capturing a lot of the tenant expression in those photos. Get some additional exterior shots. And obviously, the exterior and interior reflect the diverse tenant types. It's apparent that sort of a variety of designs, but extreme colors are not frequently found on the exterior or interior. There's a few bright colored awnings that I've found at town center for modern acupuncture. Chase has a pretty bright blue awning right next to T-Mobile. Wells Fargo is red. Four Eyes is a pretty bright bluish purple, and then Starbird is probably one of the brightest colors used at town center facing the inside of the mall. There's the proposed awnings again. And the planning commission can approve a permit amendment for the sign permit and design review if they can make all of the eight findings required and concerns again are findings four, six, and eight, which speak to the awnings being harmonious with development adjacent to the site, them being visually pleasing, and them being consistent with the character of the buildings to which they're attached. Lastly, it's worth noting that the existing 2017 approval did not include our standard commercial lighting conditions of approval related to sign lighting, interior and exterior lighting. Those findings are included as attachment attachment five for the staff report. Those are our standard sign and non-residential lighting conditions. I conducted an inspection at night of the tenant space and found that it's showing up in this photo on the right on the screen that the interior store lighting was still on. There's two display TVs that are oriented towards the parking lot, and those were rotating T-Mobile advertising. Those are still on. And ordinarily, our conditions of approval would control the timing of sign illumination, as well as the timing of interior lights, including display TVs. There's an opportunity for the commission to direct staff to include those standard conditions of approval with any resolution that's prepared for this project. I can come back to any of those photos if you need. The options for the commission tonight are to direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the permit amendment, and we can come back and put that resolution on to consent for the planning commission to consider at the next meeting. You may also deny or modify the application. And again, I would return at a future meeting with the appropriate resolution, or if there's more information that the commission needs and make a decision, continue. The sign, the applicant here is David Ford, sitting in the audience, and he can answer any questions that you have. And I, T-Mobile was on New York Times, so they may or may not be joining us if we have questions for corporate, but they are aware of the meeting and everything that's included in the staff report, as well as my presentation and comments tonight.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. At this point, before we go to the sign applicant here, we'll see if the commissioners have any questions for you. I'll start with you, Daniel, to see if you have any questions you want to ask Tracy before we consider this.
As I understand it, assuming we were to
Would you turn your microphone on, please?
If we were to approve the sign change, meaning the awnings mostly, that we would still want to append the requirements for the lighting.
Correct.
Yeah, that's my only question.
Okay, thank you. Valerie?
Just want to understand, there is an existing signage, and the new signage will just go in place of it.
Correct.
There is an opportunity to do modifications to that, or that would require any exterior work for that modifications.
To the sign?
Shifting it left or right, for instance?
Yes.
That would require some additional work?
Well, you could direct staff to approve a different location for the sign if that's what the commission wishes. Or return to the commission at a future hearing if you'd like to approve it, see it and prove it yourself.
Okay. And to you, Mr. Rizzo.
Got two questions. Other than the findings, which are very generalized, do we have any specific zoning ordinance, or is there anything in the design guidelines from the mall that prohibits any colors that are vibrant?
No, the landlord, yeah, the landlord did approve this application before it came to the town, which is their normal procedure. And their design guidelines encourage individuality of design. They don't speak to specific selections of color palette, but it's definitely seems clear in their design guidelines that individuality and expression of the brand identity is encouraged on the exterior of these spaces.
And my second question is just about the lighting the non-residential interior lighting. Why isn't that just part of our zoning ordinance? Why do we have to make that part of the amendment? And why isn't it? Is it something that's new, that wasn't, that didn't apply to the old signage approval? Like, it seems like it's a general ordinance.
Yeah, I think in some cases, it's appropriate that to codify certain requirements. So as an example, the hours that a sign must be turned off at the close of business or 11:00 PM, whichever is later, is in our code. But these technical sort of requirements in terms of lighting and whatnot change frequently as new technology becomes available or manufacturing techniques change, that having this as a condition of approval is equally enforceable when as our code and would prevent us from having to go back to you and to the town council to continually update our zoning code to match whatever the latest technology is.
So this is just after hours. So this is at when they close, not necessarily 11 o'clock. So we're probably, we're making it a little bit more strict by applying turned off during after hours rather than the 11 o'clock standard signage off at the mall.
This, this would require them to turn them off, this condition at the close of business or 11:00 PM. So if they're open past 11, like Safeway's sign is still on past 11, they're open until midnight, Friday, too, I think.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Okay. Margaret?
Is the, the color of the awning the same as the color in the background of the sign?
Yeah, they have a specific pantone color that they use for the magenta, so the applicant's going to match it as closely as possible. Okay, yeah, but one is David can answer when he has a chance. The actual material is a sun umbrella fabric material, and the material on the sign is a it's a different, it's different, and it may reflectivity and such may change how that looks, but it's designed to match.
And about the interior lighting, were they in violation before? They had no restriction before, and now we're looking at that?
No, the, the condition requiring your attachment five, number two, number two, interior lighting shall be turned off at the close of business, except for what's necessary for security purposes, is not a part of their existing approval. Adding it now, though, would enable staff to actually enforce that condition at the present time.
So it was never a requirement?
Not a violation, correct. Yeah, it's unfortunate that it wasn't included, and it may have been one of the first to add display TVs oriented towards the parking lot, and so sometimes these conditions evolve when we serve what applicants are doing to advertise their business, especially when they face these really frequently traveled roads and parking lots.
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. I have one question for Ms. Danforth here. We've had previous discussions about sign identity, particularly at the village, so forth. Why, I assume that's still true, that they really need that corporate identity on the sign? Is there any differentiation between the sign and these awnings at all?
I think you can reasonably differentiate between them. I would say that just applying plain English, the sign is the sign above. The awnings also carry the name, but they're clearly not designed to catch the eye or the attention the way the sign above is. So I would assume that you could separate them and regulate them more as a design review feature without the constraints that we face with signs.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so so you are here on behalf of Cosign. Great. Would you care to step up and make your presentation, please?
It's my name, Steve.
We got to make sure the microphone's on there.
There we go. Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Ford. I'm representing Cosign. I just want to talk briefly about the, the project. It is staff alluded to in their report. This is a rebranding. T-Mobile's doing this at all of their locations. They updated the logo, removed some dashes out of there. The other part that they're doing is trying to integrate the magenta color on awnings and other branding that they have at all of their sites. So they're trying to get, you know, kind of a uniform look to all of their sites. So that's why they're proposing the magenta as opposed to the the black or the slate gray that was up there previously. So that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's your scope. It's just the sign up on the face and awnings.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Tracy, do you have anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. So
I have a do, I have a, sure, yeah. Is the, is the awning dimensions exactly the same as the current awnings?
Yes, the, the awning material, so the framing is going to stay in place. We're just replacing the material. So the awning dimensions are identical. I believe that the signage on the awnings is also identical. I think when Tracy had put that up on there, it's, I think it's 2.1 square foot feet existing for each one of those, and it's going to be 2.1 for the new ones as well. So the idea is that they're going to look identical. The only change really is the color and that the logo doesn't have those dashes in it.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, then. All right, here we are at the moment where we would entertain some public comment for this. And Tracy, do you show any buddy online?
No, sir.
Okay. That settles that issue. So we won't have any public comment on this issue. Because I see no one else in the room. And it's just us. So we're going to bring it back here. And we're going to start to talk about the T-Mobile signage. I don't know of any way to preface it, so other than just let you guys jump in and say what you want to say about it. So I'll start again with you, Daniel.
I'm, I'm happy to jump in. I guess if you look at the findings, number four, you know, harmonious, consistent. I mean, I think the, the pictures that Tracy provided, in particular, Wells Fargo, Chase, and the restaurant, you know, all bright colors. And certainly, Wells Fargo is, is a very similar brightness and color. And this is a retail establishment. So I, I guess I find that, you know, it really is consistent with what we've been approving in the past and with the shopping nature of a shopping center sense of order. I think one thing I would note is that if you look at to the, to the right of the pedestrian passage, you know, those awnings are that kind of gray charcoal color. And if, as you go to the west, the other side of the passage, the gray is actually consistent with that, but it doesn't necessarily need to be because it's really a separate building. So I'd say it's consistent with what else is going on in that whole block. And you know, I think in terms of the view from, from Tamalpais, it's quite set back beyond all the parking. There's a lot of trees there. I don't think it's going to be something that's going to be distracting to drivers or people. It's going to be blended in with the rest of the, of the structure. So I would support. I would support the applicant. I think with the condition that the requirements, the find, the requirements for the lighting be added to the approval. That is the standard commercial lighting conditions of approval.
Good, all right. Thank you for that. All right. So then I'll turn to you, Valerie, and see what your thoughts are about this project.
So my thought is, I'm I do not mind having the awnings to represent the identity for the applicant, but my concern is for that particular color to be right next to the Chase color, just to, these two colors do not go well together. And it might be a little bit of a cluster, so that would be my concern. But also, since we do have this opportunity, and since there is a lot of bright colors happening, so let's say we approve the motion to, you know, to go, to proceed with the bright awnings. My recommendation would be to shift the sign to align to the entry of T-Mobile store, kind of similar how Wells Fargo is positioning their sign. It's a little bit towards the center, just so that it's in between the stock reveals and a little bit more balanced architecturally and not clashing us all together. Just feel like the, there is this organization for the awning in general.
Okay. So that's your expression of your thoughts about this. You find that you can make the other findings for it?
I believe that it would go with the four to make it, and eight to make it harmonious with the surrounding.
All right, thank you. Okay, then over to you, Mr. Rizzo.
You know, I think Daniel said exactly what I was going to say. I took my thunder, but yeah, you know, I, I think it's a branding moment for T-Mobile. They certainly didn't have an opportunity to really upgrade the building and to do their own storefront, any materials on the building facade. So I think this is a way for them to be seen from the street and, and looking at it from the street. The, I don't think the gray awnings look that, that great anyway. Driving down the street, so I, I think it could, could actually look a lot better than it does today. And you know, with that, I, I think I could, I could make the findings. I don't, I don't really have a lot more comments. Any other commissioners are very talked.
Okay, that's short, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. So Margaret, what are your thoughts about this?
I would say ditto. Daniel said everything exactly the way that I would have said it. I, I actually think the bright color next to the blue is attractive. I like the variety of the town center. And, and I think I have no problem with making all the findings necessary. I would like to add the interior lighting issue.
Right. Okay. For my part, I'm of two minds about this. One, it strikes me as awful bright. Yeah, but on the other hand, you know, these businesses need that noticeable element in order to draw people in. It, I think that the way it is now does not notify people that T-Mobile is over there. And they've been a tenant now for almost six years. So they need to keep being a tenant, but I just wish they had different colors. So it's hard. I'm just going to say that I was recently on a resort town, and it's the only time I've ever heard of this, that the town said McDonald's could not have its golden arches.
Oh, I think I
That's the only place I've ever seen that happen. They got, they got light blue arches instead of golden arches.
Is it in Sedona?
So you know, I wish we could have that kind of teeth, but that would require a lot of effort, and we're not a Wild West town. So anyway, that's where I stand. I appreciate their effort here. Stay in business at that location. I think we should keep them, keep them viable. I just wish it wasn't magenta, but it is. So there we go. So, and I think it's a necessity to adopt the interior lighting regulations. Been a thorn in my side. So I would like to add that to it. And what else was I going to say? I think that's about it, really. Other than to address Valerie's comment, I like it centered over the, the side. I think it encapsulates the size of the business and draws people in. You look at the other stores, and it's not particularly centered over the doorway. In some of them, it's centered on their space like the Chase inventories. But I think, yeah, I think if it moved over an asymmetrical, then it would look odd. Be asymmetrical on those two awnings. That's what I think. So okay, so we seem to be in general agreement here. So somebody needs to make a motion here for this application.
Okay. I would make the motion that we approve a motion to the lighting staff with a resolution, improvement of permit amendment application staff will return to your meeting with appropriate resolution. Relation, including the lighting conditions of approval in that recommendation.
Okay, is that adequate? Right, then we just need a second.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Yes, I second.
Okay. Great.
Commissioner Kenny?
Bye.
Commissioner Boyer?
Hi.
Commissioner, Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. So are there any type of rights for this? Can anybody appeal this or not? Oh, we, when we do the
Correct. Staff will return with a resolution at the next meeting, and following adoption of the resolution, there'll be a 10-day appeal period.
And my only other question would be, then after that, what is the timeline for this? Okay. So as soon as we sign the resolution, then they can stop illuminating the night in the interior. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So now to the meaty part of tonight's. So now to the meaty part of tonight's agenda. So this is the design review discussion. Continuation. Of review and discussion of potential amendments to Corte Madera zoning ordinance regulations related to design review. Easily said. More so than implemented here. So. Who's gonna kick this off?
I will kick this off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this is coming back to you. You last discussed this in September of last year. And Commissioner Boucher was wasn't present, so I'm glad you're you're here. And then I provided her with. packets from September thirteenth and also September twenty seventh, which were the two previous meetings. And so we are back. To discuss these and. Outline the things we have changed and the things we all everyone agreed upon at the previous two workshops. And then also discuss some additional items that need to be worked on and then also provide you with next steps on. Where we're where we'll go after this. So with that, do you have the clicker Tracy? Oh, there it is. That's okay. So the the purpose of this is this meeting, this workshop. Is again to provide staff direction and recommendations regarding the development. Of a zoning ordinance amendment related to design review. Specifically related to policies regarding designer view clarification of existing regulations. And any changes to to the structure of the code and and how. How the designer view regulations are are laid out in the code. No formal action is being taken at this particular meeting. And again, like I mentioned, future planning, public hearings, or future planning meetings, or perhaps a public hearing. Will be scheduled to review. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and then your recommendation will go to the town council. Terms of in terms of background, design review regulations are just are discretionary process. That controls the visual and physical character of the town. The guidelines are designed to help ensure that new development and the alteration of existing development. Needs the standards such as lot coverage, floor area and setbacks. Focus of this report is based upon the two workshops we have had back in the fall. As well as all the feedback we've received from the commission and the public. Over over the last, over the months since those two workshops. And we did send out a notice to quite a few architects to to review the staff report and hopefully attend. We don't have any anybody here live, but perhaps we'll have someone online as we did in the first workshop. We had several architects. Submitted comments and gave us some good feedback. The the report is also based upon staff's experience dealing and working with the design review requirements over the last eight plus years. We've identified potential changes to the code that are meant to clarify existing regulations. And also provide consistency with many staff interpretations that we've made over the years. And overall, to make this easier for applicants and the public. And staff, of course, to interpret and use. We've also looked at looking at policies that staff may want to add potential projects that do not currently receive design review. Some of the global changes that we've made are that when we we talk about, instead of just saying area, we've made it more succinct. Clarifying that area always means gross floor area. We've also rounded up the numbers and using standard language. Things such as a more than 250 square feet in area, instead of saying less than, so an applicant will know, you know, one can construct. A 250 square foot. Project and that will. Have to, you know, that will need to go through design. Need to go through design review or not to just make clear clearer numbers and clearer delineation of of the thresholds. And and also also we another thing we have done, we've taken all the the design review regulations related to residential. Projects and we've we've grouped those into one area under general provisions, instead of having them in each individual section, which we had before. When we had R one, R one A and so on. So we've grouped those all together. And I think the next section I hand over. To Tracy. Questions in between or.
I don't know. Anybody want to ask Phil anything out of the gate of before we get to Tracy? Okay, don't see anybody indicating that, so. Our way.
And just building upon what. Bill was just talking about. Back up art, the staff report's organized in sort of categories of changes, if you will. So the first sort of category of changes, number number one. In the staff board and on the screen here is. Simplifying the plain language of the code. And as Phil was saying, right now, our existing design review language. Talks about when a given project is exempt from design review and what we're proposing to do would. Simplify the way we're talking about it, especially for applicants is, is my project subject to design review? When is it required? So it's kind of flipping the language in a in the reverse. And really what we'd probably say is makes more sense, particularly to applicants is when again, when is it required? Second thing that Phil talked about is. Simplifying and making it easier to use by taking design review regulations, which are sprinkled throughout a residential districts. And read very similarly, grouping them into one location in general provisions. And part of that change would be looking at R one B and R one C type lots for which. Are much larger than other our zone properties and have much. Much larger setbacks. Currently, only one of those zones has a threshold for design review that is much larger. It allows you to do a 500 square foot addition. And anything larger than that needs design review. The other our zones are 250 square feet and it's. And R one B and R one C lots are very similar in size and similar in setback requirements that they should be the same and they're not. One. Is 250, one's 500. And the last meeting, we talked about making them the same at 500. So that's another. Small nuance. And additionally. We talked about clarifying some other confusing aspects of the code. The and or problem that nobody probably wants to talk about again, but it. Meant that a strict interpretation of the use of that phrase and or was something with. Staff finds problematic and should we should. Make that go away. And if you've reviewed previous staff reports or meeting video. I think everyone was in agreement that that. That strict interpretation is problematic and we should fix it. And then lastly, of course. Is is just looking at what our proposed language is. And so where we've come from last meeting is talking about all those issues. And looking at the plain language of the code and what is that amendment going to look like? And that's on page three of the staff report in italics. It's says design review approval is required. Sorry. Is required for projects within all residential districts that include one or more of the following. And it's got a list of seven. Different items that if you meet that criteria, then you were. Are required to go through a designer new permit. And again, that's page three of the staff board in italics. And I don't know if anybody I can pause there if anybody had questions about. How any of that's reading or winning any of that means.
And the new language, the new language is in bold. In italics, all right.
Does that make sense to commissioners so far? You guys on board? Margaret?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense, meaning do we have any questions?
Yes. Two distinct a distinction to be made. Yes, thank you.
Sounds like. Sorry. And Christmas Tree Hill. Yes.
Commissioner, I wonder if we can take these one at a time rather than plowing through all this and coming back to discussion.
I would like to get through the whole thing. Yeah, and then we'll come back and tackle it one by one.
Okay, your choice.
Great. The last couple of workshops, we also talked about Christmas Tree Hill. Christmas Tree Hill has some special regulations. And one of those. I think those have been in place since I think ninety five, ninety six. And one of those special regulations is that the design review threshold is much, much lower for. A lot that's located on Christmas Tree Hill than it is if it were in the flats or anywhere else in Corte Madera. Specifically, the design review threshold on Christmas Tree Hill is requires design review for an addition that's more than 100 square feet. In floor area or a new accessory structure that's more than 50 square feet in area or more than six feet tall. So that's very low. And then we. Talked about that and the general consensus was that the threshold for a design review on Christmas Tree Hill should match. What we're doing for other residential zones. So that'd be 250 square feet. Of additions would be the threshold for a design review on Christmas Tree Hill. And it would essentially our Christmas Tree Hill section of code would just refer back to the language that's proposed on on page three of the staff report. And. Align with that. And of course, we don't want to make these changes without. Riding an opportunity for the folks that live on Christmas Tree Hill. To comment and ask questions. So. You'll see in one of our next steps is to conduct that outreach in a workshop type of format. Invite everyone on the hill who owns property there. To hear what staff is proposing. And then give us our feedback. So we would do that before we came back to the commission. With any changes to the threshold. For design review on on Christmas Tree Hill. And another thing that we talked about was.
I do have a question for staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was back in September of twenty twenty two. Has there been? And it was a public meeting. So has there been any feedback from anybody? On Christmas Tree Hill since then?
I've talked about it with a couple of folks with smaller applications up there. There was one eighty square foot shed. That went through designer view process. That was a lot of time and money for him and. So I've been sharing that with people who have. Sort of been subjected to the lower designer view threshold, and then they seem generally surprised. He, this particular individual was surprised that he needed, he didn't know he needed a designer view at all, because it doesn't. If you think logically about what he was building. Wouldn't think eighty square feet mattered, shed mattered to to anyone. So I've, we've been. Haven't heard directly, no one's provided comment to us directly about. This change that we're proposing. But we have been, when I've shared it with people, they've. Been happy to hear that we're looking at. Making them like everybody, everybody else.
Thank you.
And we'll find out when we do that outreach with the everyone, thanks, whoever wants to.
Yeah, and again, like I think the commission mentioned last time, several commissioners mentioned last meetings. We really want to reach out to the neighborhood themselves and really get their their take. I can imagine some may think the rules are too stringent and some may want to keep the strict the rules the way they are. So we'll. Definitely have that out, that specific outreach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then. Building some more and what we was discussed at previous meetings are existing code. Right now for non residential properties. Requires design review for any exterior modification to structure or site. And here's an example of one. Exterior modification to the the new Bermetown restaurant at Old Corte Madera Square. They changed the paint color. Used on the building and that requires design review approval. We've seen design review approval for. Window changes. Addition or change of shape and size of windows and some other examples that were included as an attachment at our last workshop in September. And. The. Staff is proposing to. Provide just a little bit more flexibility for commercial property owners to make. Minor changes. Without. Meeting design review approval and minor changes would. Consist maybe of of. These smaller. Repair type of projects that. You know, would. Be a judgment call by staff whether or not it was. Significant change or minor enough. And what we're looking to do is to allow people to make replacement in kind of. Certain features or architectural features or colors. And without the burden of design review. Two thousand sixteen for the MX one zone. The town adopted language similar to what we're proposing on the bottom of page five. That. Like I said. Requires design review for new or significant replacement of exterior elements or structures or new. Floor area or new structures in commercial. Properties and the goal of this language, like I said, is to allow for. For minor changes. We're not.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe.
And I think this also stemmed a little bit from from COVID, given that the challenges that businesses were. Having to go through and that this is a an opportunity to support businesses to do reasonable changes, you know, set mainly aesthetic changes. To their businesses and and not be. Overburdened with with an additional designer view process. Another another aspect of this. Reason for this change. Okay, back over to me, back to to the residential. World. We talked about this. At the. You could both workshop earlier modifications to thresholds for design review for properties in the in the floodplain. Again, similar to. Trying to support businesses is trying to support residences who are in the floodplain. And how can we encourage them to elevate their homes? But do it in a way that's that's tasteful and does not have significant impacts upon neighboring properties. And so. Main focus, the focus here is for projects that are just lifting their home because of the FEMA requirements. So the proposed language is. Shown here, a new language for project projects. In this, we kind of go back to starting with the negative, but that's really the only best way to write this. Is that a project does not require design review if it meets all the following. So the overall height of the building. Will not be more than twenty two feet. Finished floor of the home is no more than two feet above base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is the. Is the the elevation that FEMA has determined will occur at what they call the 100 year flood. So your finished floor cannot be more than two feet above that. And you're not. Me cannot add more than 250 square feet of new single story gross floor area. So most people, when they're raising their homes, they're they're also wanting to make some improvements. And sometimes that's just interior improvements, moving walls around, but often it is wanting to to add some square footage of living area. So we thought it was reasonable. To allow them to add up to 250 square feet. With within a single story. Project. And also allow them to add up to 250 square feet of new or expanded decks. And the details of this discussion is in page six of the staff report. And again, the the intention is to to have homes. Be safe out of the floodplain. Mitigate sea level rise, but at the same time not impact neighboring properties. Because of, you know, windows are going up, decks are going up, and hopefully this will not result in significant. Impacted privacies or views. Or natural light. So that's the proposed revised language for residential properties in in the floodplain.
We are, we are seeing many applications where that are substantial improvements that are also raising their home and. That need design review for other reasons. For instance, a new second story, you've seen a couple of those where they've raised the home and attached a new second story and. You know, those wouldn't be exempt under this code language. Those would still, if you need design review for other reasons due to the size of your addition or the fact that it's a new story. Then you would still, you would need design review for that reason, just because you raise it does not equal exempt. You have to tick off all of the boxes that are listed here. In order to to be exempt from design review. listed here in order to be, to uh, be exempt from design review.
You know, commissioners have any questions for these guys regarding this section?
Questions, not comments, correct?
Right.
No question.
Where in the code do we find base uh, base elevated flood elevation, base flood?
Corder Madera, it's set by FEMA and it's ten.
Was it in the code somewhere?
It's titled sixteen flood damage prevention.
Hmm, okay. And then also, um, it seems like a, a person who wants to do a second story with a flat roof could fit within the two hundred and two, within the twenty-two square feet.
Um, it, yeah, number on page six, then item three. If they wanted to put on a new story, it would not check that box. It, it does not, it would have to, it could not include more than two hundred and fifty square feet of new single story gross floor area. So if they are including a, a new story, they need design review for that reason. As part of that review.
Well, I, I
Even if that news, I think you're
new stories results in only a twenty-one square, twenty-one foot tall home, you still need to go through designer view. Does not include more than two hundred and fifty square feet, single story floor area.
So I think what you're saying is to there's, we can work on that language. So that's clear what we mean.
I, I don't think it's clear. I think someone could do a two-story building under the twenty-two feet.
Yeah, we, the, we'll make that more clear that what, what we're intending is that no new floor is added, whether it's second or third.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah.
Good. I had one question is, uh, where did we come up with the two fifty number? Is that sort of aligned with other, other jurisdictions uh, codes? It seems like well, two fifty is coming up a lot as kind of an exemption. I was just curious if that's sort of a standard uh, number.
Yeah, you know, in researching other jurisdictions, that is a, a pretty standard number that people use as a a, a reasonable amount of, of area to add. Um, it's not gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would just say, I mean, it does vary some. And it, it's more or less, I think we talked about this at the last meeting. Corder Madera has had, I mean, this is Corder Madera's number and it's been two fifty for many, many years. I don't know exactly when exactly the town came up with two fifty, but to change it starts to basically have a, opens up a big conversation and discussion about what is that appropriate number. And so it's we've relying on the fact that it's worked. It's, it's sort of embedded now within the town and sort of our residents are aware of um, that, that requirement. Um, I would say it's, it's fairly um, some communities and probably Anne speaks to this, when you go to a, a Belvedere or maybe a Tiburon or Sausalito, it's, it's much more strict in terms of you can't really add anything um, without design review, whereas larger cities like San Rafael or Nevada, it's, it's a little bit more relaxed where they're bigger cities and generally it's kind of comes with the territory of how I would say largest city is, but also how uh, in, in respect to Tiburon or Belvedere or um, Ross um, and um, Sausalito, those communities have specific express that um, I guess a value statement in, in where to draw that line and where that threshold should be. Um, and so it, I think it does actually come down to a value statement by the town of where you want to be on that spectrum. In terms of how restrictive, how onerous versus how relaxed, what comes with that in terms of the ability for the town to weigh in on things such as windows and placement of those privacy impacts. And so that's that's why oh, reopening it, we were recommending not doing that um, because it really can um, is sort of a big statement to make um, in that where to draw that line and threshold. And it's worked for the town, I think relatively well.
And, and back to Daniel's, just real quick, his statement about two stories. So if you have an existing two-story building, but you're not adding two hundred and fifty square feet on it, are you still allowed to raise your raise your structure out of the floodplain? Are we only talking about single level buildings? Like say you did have a flat roof building that exists and you're not adding any second story square footage, are you allowed to?
If, you know, as long as, as, as long as your, as long as your building is not more than twenty-two feet in height.
Yeah.
When you're done.
So we're not limiting it to people or taxing people that do not. So they still have the ability to raise their house if they have an existing two-story building and it's under twenty-two hundred square feet.
Yeah. And if it's, and if it's more, obviously they could still do it, that just at that point would need design.
Hmm, okay. Just cheers. Thank you.
So um, for reference, the NAV ten is base flood. And our NAV eleven is now of the FEMA requirement to get above that or what is the uh?
The town requires one foot um, a free board, one foot above base flood elevation after ultimate settlement. So we're seeing people go uh, to eleven and a touch. Calculate. Settle.
And um.
And some elect to go even more, just bits proactively raise their homes when they're seeing flooding in the street around them. Sometimes in that east side of town, we are seeing people go to two feet above, on the three feet above, required would be one. And the reason for the two in the language that we've written is to give people a little flexibility if they want to proactively go, go higher and especially if sea level rise or rate of protection.
And I think it's fair to say that staff was, you know, trying to figure out what the right, right number was there. Two, maybe three, you know, the, in consideration of ultimately what's reasonable. Some people do want to go higher, given climate change, sea level rise. I think we're starting to see a little bit more of that potentially. But um, you have to balance that with obviously the higher you go or potential acts that might occur in terms of height shading, privacy effects.
Yeah. And at that point, you know, higher than two, I think. Where we'd want to see that evaluated through the designer view process.
And neighborhood input.
You guys all know, uh, Mariner Cove streets are down about what, eight or something or nine? This is a frame of reference.
Some of Mariner Cove is not in the flood zone, so above ten and then much of it is now. Um, but yeah. And Marina Village, some of Marina Village is even lower, less than six-two in A V D. Um, and some of it is Yolo and Baja is, is higher. Um, and some areas in Mariner Cove and Mohawk area in Bedera Gardens is, se- seems to be one of the lowest where we're seeing uh, recollect a previous application to raise a, a new home. There was a five-foot raise um, on Mohawk Avenue.
Right, okay. That gives some sort of context around what this means. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Daniel.
The, to Commissioner Arizno's question about the two fifty, um, the review we did, the commission did. And I, I can't remember the address at the moment where there was the issue about the bed, bathroom window facing the house. Was the addition there over two fifty? Is that why it came to us?
Um, that was an appeal application and the addition was over two fifty. Um, we'll say it was about five, five fifty.
Okay.
Six hundred and it included uh, raising the finish for the home above base flood elevation.
Uh, thanks. That's helpful.
Okay. Want to jump into decks? My God.
Okay, yes, moving on to the requirements for decks. Um, again, this was, this was a, a long discussion, lots of good input. Um, first I'll just start out with focusing on the front yard and focusing on uncovered decks that are three feet or less. Um, so how, you know, um, and we have um, a fair number of, of uncovered decks in the front yard coming in, but rarely do they come all the way up to the front property line. People tend to put their decks, you know, closer to the home and leave some type of landscaping between, between the deck and the, and the front walk with front property line. So um, to start out, we've, um, we proposed that, that uncovered decks that are three feet or less in height measured from the finished grade um, to the top of the deck surface. So we're not talking about the railing. We just talked about the deck surface itself. And we've said that that may extend into the required setback area in the front yard. So you can put your deck right up to the, um, to your, your front fence. Um, like I said, we don't find that happening a lot and um, and we think that's a, a reasonable allowance for, for property owners to do that. When you take that three foot um, or less deck to the backyard, the rear yard, that may extend in also into the required setback area, but it must be a minimum of at least five feet from the rear property line. So allow, allowing a little bit of buffer, um, so people can't put that three-foot deck right up to the back and be able to, to peer down, you know, into their neighbor's property.
And that, that's what our existing regulations allow. Our existing regulations allow that deck to go occupy any uh, required yard. So it could go up to the property line. Um, and the, the commission expressed some concerns with that being allowed. Um, there's a graphic on page seven of the staff report that shows you a deck um, that with our existing regulations, certainly there's some privacy impacts, but could go up to the property line. So what we're proposing on this slide on that second cell in the rear yard is to um, add a setback requirement. Not allowing it to go up to that rear um, or side property line any longer, but have to be setback five feet at least.
And we had a cou- a couple of cases where that's been an issue. So we think this whole is, is a needed, a needed change and needed increase in that regulation. Um, and then identical language for um, side yards, including street side yards. And they also makes three foot or less may extend in the required setback area, but must be at least five feet from the side property line. Now, when we go to uncovered decks that are more than three feet in height, it's a little bit more complicated and, and obviously could have um, impacts, more um, noticeable impacts to neighbors. For that, we said that um, three foot, more than three feet um, may extend into required setback area, a maximum of six feet. And so you can only go into that required setback area um, six feet and not greater than that in terms of, in terms of horizontal distance. And then for rear yard, same language, you may extend into that rear yard setback. But again, you can only go um, six feet into that rear yard setback. So that's going to provide a natural buffer um, for those decks um, away from property lines and, and not significantly impact privacy. And then lastly, um, for, for decks more than three feet, then they extend in the required setback area for street side and side yard setbacks, but there must be a minimum of five feet from the side property line. So identical to, to what we said above. Um, so those are um, the, the nuances and the changes we've made. We thought we'd put it in a table like this to make it easier for people to understand and to follow. Um, but we feel these are, are reasonable um, requirements um, to allow people to be, you know, pretty flexible in terms of, of uh, decks that are three feet or less. And um, adding obviously greater restrictions if you're going uh, more than three feet in height.
Just, just to be clear, what's in italics on that page? Uh, that's new rules. It, it's not, non-italic is existing rules that we feel are working. And no, no change there. So italics is, is the new.
And then um,
Take this one.
Sure, yeah, you had, you had this.
Isn't most of our side yard setbacks five feet in R one?
Yes, R one A is ten.
So it may extend into the setback, but not, but must be, so it's basically aligning with most of our ones, side yard setback.
Uh, the, the, there's in R one, it's a five-foot setback for lots smaller than seventy-five hundred square feet. And six foot for equal to or larger than seventy-five hundred square feet. I'd say it's maybe fifty, fifty. Um, but, but yeah, existing regulations allow that that deck more than three feet, that elevated deck to extend into the side yard up, up to three feet. So that's got it. That's right, right now, this, as long as three feet's left at the property. And so three feet's close, five feet would make it back it up to align with what we're requiring in the rear um, proposing to require in the rear yard. It's a low decks.
One time you guys did a quantity of flag lots. There aren't many, right?
No. And, no, I mean, we have, I don't, I don't, did we ever do a townwide?
Sort of a informal.
Informal. Well, yeah, I know, right, for Oakdale, the Oakdale project, we talked about flag lots a lot. Um, but there, right, I don't, there aren't a significant number of flag lots in town.
That was an unusual situation that we don't need to worry about so much here, right?
Hopefully not.
Okay.
Um, talking about, again, here decks that are more than three feet in height, elevated decks like the one shown here on the screen. Um, and what's the designer view requirement for elevated decks? Right now, um, it needs, the deck needs design review if it's fifteen feet in height or more. A deck that's more than three feet. Um, but less than fifteen feet in height does not require a designer review approval under current regulations. And at our last meeting, the commission expressed some concern with that um, omission. Um, and so what we're proposing is a tiered approach really for review and approval of elevated decks. Um, there are some of our regulations that control the size and location of these elevated decks. They count towards lot coverage. So um, that controls the size of an elevated deck. They can only project certain distances into setbacks that we just talked about, only six feet into the rear yard and only six feet into the front yard. So that, that controls their size. Um, but they could still nevertheless, their presence could have privacy impacts and what do the regulations potentially look like for these elevated decks? So I stated that it would be a two-tiered approach where an elevated deck that's more than three feet um, and less than or equal to ten feet in height measured to the certain decking surface. Um, so it's, it's not, it's only moderately elevated. Um, it needs design review or it needs written approval from the adjacent neighbors. Um, and that lines up with how we're treating fences that exceed six feet in height, up to eight feet in height. You get design review or you get written approval from the neighbor adjacent to the fence. Also aligns with how we're doing um, non-clear story windows for ADUs. And a clear story windows required for an ADU when it's facing a shared property line and is close enough to within fifteen feet. You need design review for non-clear story there or an approval from the neighbors. So comfortable, but that should work. Um, any the deck that's more than ten feet in height, so needs design review. Um, so we're lowering that threshold. Right now, we're measuring deck to the top of the railing to determine fifteen feet. So um, this would measure to the cert decking surface level uh, to make it simpler and clearer. Um, and a deck that's more than ten feet in height, again, would need a design review approval. Lowering that threshold help mitigate some of these privacy concerns from might be caused by some of these decks that are elevated. Um, some draft languages included on page eight of the staff report um, and you know, summarized on the screen.
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate, we're in some ways, we're making, we're making smaller decks. Um, we're reducing the thresholds and making them less stringent. And um, but then we're in terms of the, making it more stringent for decks that are, are ten feet in height or greater, where it used to be fifteen feet high and greater. And like Tracy said, for the first one, you, the, the property owner has two choices. They can get written approval from the adjacent neighbor and then they're good to go. Just need a building permit. And if that's not possible, um, then we send them to the, the staff level designer view process.
And, and what, what, what would elevate it past the staff level of design review?
Um, elevates beyond staff of design review is if it's um, very controversial and we're not able to, to work with the neighbors and the applicant and come to a um, you know, a consensus. And so we may just choose to um, elevate it and bump it up to planning commission. Or another, another option is we do make a decision and then that decision by staff is appealed. And then that will, then the project will go to the planning commission. It's kind of a, you know, the fir- first one is, is a call, you know, made by us. Um, sometimes that call is also made in consultation with, with the applicant, you know, what, what did they want to do?
So where is um, where is the notice requirement here? Where is the notice requirement here that they notice?
It's a good question. But and so then the noticing well is is written there in terms of noticing the the adjacent neighbor neighbor, but. All design review applications, whether they're staff level or planning commission, the town notices all property owners and tenants within three hundred feet. That's a standard. Uh, noticing procedure that won't change, um, and that's required of all design review applications. This is just specifically, if you want to put your, if you want to make your deck between three and ten. You need to know, get approval from your adjacent neighbor, neighbor or neighbors. And if you're able to obtain that in writing. And and we see and that's, you know, legitimate, then we won't require you to go through design review.
Good with that, Margaret? I mean, the, do you have the information you want? We'll talk about that later. Jim, did you have a question on this?
Um, yes, so the dimensions we're talking about are the tallest point of the deck regardless of the slope away from the building. It's not where it, when it comes out of the house, and I'm just saying that because we have a lot of slope lots. It'll be really tough to get. A deck out the back. Under ten feet.
Yep.
Okay, and and ten feet, I'm going to ask the same question, where do we come up with ten feet? Was that a study done or is that just? Over a period of years, you guys have been working on.
Be about a second floor deck.
Yeah.
That we'd want to see designer before.
Say it again.
We think that would be about a second floor deck.
Okay.
And we are capturing awful lot of decks at at over at the fifteen feet in height. Most are sixteen, eighteen feet on those slope lots. So. We'll probably cap- capture a few more, but uh with lowering this to to ten feet needing design review. Um, but most of our decks are significantly. Taller than ten feet. That we're doing design review.
Do we have any width restrictions for the ducks? Let's say if the. Um, they proposed element is under three feet, like two foot six step in the front yard. That goes all the way to the setback to be. Require design review for that. And where if not, then there are there any width restrictions?
Um. The that's.
No.
No, we don't require designer view for a deck that's two foot, six inches in height, it could go.
To the property line. Entire property line in the front yard.
We haven't seen that. We see um decks in the front yard on slope lots part that are parking decks and we see front porches.
What what about roof decks?
Those would be. Right now, uh, if someone's proposing a roof deck, we're capturing that with designer views, it's over fifteen feet in height. Um. And with this regulation, uh, you'd be hard pressed to do a roof deck that's not more than ten feet height to the surface level. So it would require designer view.
Daniels, did you have a question on this?
No. Um. I know we're trying to do away with graphics, but um this strikes me as a. Situation that would help with a graphic representation of what this is, like a. A line that would say you're okay inside of this, outside of that. Now, okay. Something that would demonstrate that it might take a couple of graphic images to do that, because I find this a little confusing.
Yeah. Yes, we we definitely want to in, I'm, I I don't think, we're definitely not going away from graphics. I'm I'm a big proponent of graphics and that's something we're. Um, more than could.
Are you talking about? These regulations?
Graphic representation of these.
These or both?
Both.
Okay.
You know, that if. You've got the flat, you've got a hillside, you've got what's permitted or height above that thing, and you know, if it were a red line or something that was. Really representative of what the height are and the setback and et cetera, I think it would really. People might look at it and then go, oh, I get it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The um. Talking about this uh neighbor uh agreement letter.
Uh, yes.
Oh, my God.
Danger danger. Well, like Tracy hit said, we we do use that for fences now. And um. Yeah, it is um. It's kind of, it seems to be one or the other. E- either it's very easy and the neighbor's on board, or we're going to the designer review. Then I think it's complicated.
I think we've only s- we've seen one. Um. Design review for non-clear story windows on on ADUs. Um, the rest have been neighbor permission, or they elected to stick with the clear story window. That's obviously an option too.
In attachment to um uh eighteen eighteen design review finding. Number nine is. Does impacts on neighboring residents are minimized. Um. That's a very uh general statement, right? Um, so. Um. I wouldn't know how to. Encourage definition of that. Uh, maybe you guys might have some ideas of how to state, you know, what minimal. Design review finding. Or impact on neighbor residents.
Which which number are you referring to?
Number nine, uh, the uh. Design review findings, I'm on uh. Attachment two eighteen eighteen four two zero. Design review findings, number nine. It's in the uh staff report from September.
Oh, okay, got it. It's Christmas Tree Hill. Design review finding nine.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Christmas Tree Hill, got it.
As we have that.
So is this getting absorbed or sort of going away in some way or um?
Oh, as part of our next steps and and our outreach to Christmas Tree Hill, and and we talked about this at our last meeting, which was to. Um, simplify Christmas Tree Hill required findings, some repeat each other. Some are very similar to one another and could be com- combined, and some are repetitive of existing design review findings. Um, so we do plan to bring that back to the commission to make sure that. We have what helps you. Um, approve a project on Christmas Tree Hill, the best. Findings that you find helpful.
Yeah, and and where the where the language is is more precise and 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 easier to. Easier to make the call for for us and for you.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, that finding nine is sort of relates obviously to. Finding three. So finding three in our existing designer view findings for areas other than Christmas Tree Hill, which is that one that always comes up, which talks about. Not producing significant and adverse impacts related to privacy, views, sunlight, um, and so. That seems to be. An overlapping one that we grapple with a lot.
Yeah, if you're looking at that staff report from Sep- September, attachment eight kind of identifies, that's the last attachment. Some of those Christmas Tree Hill findings that are. Repetitive on the left and then what they're similar to on the on the right, whether it's similar to another Christmas Tree Hill finding or similar to an existing design review finding. But we do plan to come back. Um, with some suggestions there that that will include feedback from the. The hill dwellers also related to that and their threshold for design review.
You want to finish up um? Section six here, modifications to correct errors, uh, and omissions, or anything else you want to say on that?
I don't think we have anything to say on it. I think there's uh, for instance. Variance findings um were. Uh, erroneously omitted from our code, and we would take this opportunity to. Put them back in. There's some graphics that. Are referenced incorrectly or are confusing or un- unhelpful, cause confusion, I guess I should say, for applicants in the community that we would um remove. Some sort of cleanup items um that we identified uh back in September and the commission was generally. In agreement that we should clean it up.
And then, and then finally, just next next steps, um, as we talked about uh quite a bit. Reaching out to the Christmas Tree Hill, um. Christmas Tree Hill overlay district, and I'm getting feedback from those residents. Um, we also want to dive into uh the complicated issue of. Fences on top of retaining walls. And the best way to to regulate those, you know, to reasonably allow people to um. Flatten their flatten their their yards um to some level, um, but not. Um, overly flatten them the yards, allow them to to create retain walls, allow them to put fences on top of those retaining walls. And do that in a in a respectful way. And that will, something we'll bring back to the commission after looking at um regulations in other jurisdictions, which we've already been doing. Um, but again, grappling with that. Um. And then um look at the findings, again, as Tracy had mentioned, um, take a very close look at our at our at the findings for design review. And the findings for Christmas Tree Hill, um, how are those findings working for us? Uh, how can they be improved? How can they be clarified? So those are the next steps, which we hope to bring back to you in uh next um in the coming months. So that pretty much concludes our report. If you have anything else to add, Tracy. Open for for discussion and suggestions.
All right, before we see if there's anybody with a hand up, uh, does anyone have any further questions for staff right now on this? Okay. Do we need to recruit a hand up or you got any hands up or?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, is anybody watching?
Yes.
Or he's good to have at least one person.
Right. But nothing was received via email um either churches.
Okay. Well, we want to know who that is. Just kidding. All right. So then we will uh close public comment on this item and take it back here, so um. Commissioners. A lot to chew on here, and you know, the staff is asking for some feedback and direction. On this. Um. I think they've done a great job of distilling this down to some things, but um you like I probably have some other thoughts, so. Margaret, do you have any other thoughts?
Well, I do.
Okay, let's have it.
Um, when I was reading through this. Uh, unpaid, the staff report on page. Five. But I realized as we were just going through it, it might apply to other places when when we're in general. When talking about um. What? Is required or not required for design review? I'm wondering what the other commissioners think. About adding something that that says design review would be required. If any neighbor after notice. Objects uh with negative comments. Or if. It's determined that somehow there would be an impact. To the neighborhood, um. It it would also apply to the the floodplain issue too, but I can see how. Um, there are so many exceptions. For odd shaped lots, at least that we've seen here. Um, and uh. And I think. The notice requirements, although I think everyone tries, um, I think I've talked to Ann about this actually. Um, I think notice requirements need to really be tightened up. Um, and I think that neighbors. Need to at least have um a voice. In something that may or may not impact them. And I think that um. It's important when staff is is reviewing it. And it's not going further so that there's no public arena for someone to negatively comment or say something that this will affect me. That we um. Don't make light of that, that we have it in the regulations.
Okay, that's um a good point. Um, anything else you want to add to that um? Important statement. No, any other.
That was my statement.
Anything else? I mean, besides that, because you're pointing out one thing there, but um. We can let you live with that, right?
No, I think that this, the deck issue is um. There are so many variations of decks and and for instance. The picture that's included here to me is confusing the deck, that's the raised deck picture with the staircase next to it. Is there any um? So we're talking about regulating the deck. What what regulates the staircase? Is there? Anything?
Stairs are part of exceptions to yard requirements um and. Can project uh ex- unenclosed exterior stairs can project into setbacks in a similar way that. Decks currently can. Um. They're not generally used for. Viewing. Seating or. Entertaining. Um, and so I think if somebody just had an exterior staircase, if it was. Over fifteen feet in height under our existing designer view regulations and proposed, that we would require it's. Um. It to go through design review approval. Um, and we would look at the distances that it is from property lines relative to. Our existing code. I mean, it counts towards lot coverage if it's uh over three feet in height, you know, which also control its size on a site. Um, but you're asking a good question as one as a deck a deck.
Mm hmm, but under three feet, it's allowed to approach into the side yard setback, correct? Closer than.
At our existing code?
Yes.
Right? And we we we're not proposing to to change that part of exceptions to yard requirements. It lists other things, chimneys. Trellises, bay windows, um, some other architectural features that will continue to allow it. Jacked into the side yard. That. I don't know if that answered your question, though.
It's kind of lowered.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Jim, you've got a diagram. I know you got questions.
Well, I like the idea of the visual aids. I think it it helps, uh, yeah. Uh, it it's going to help homeowners. A lot, and it, reading code is hard for professionals. It definitely. It will be taxing on a homeowner trying to come in and try to figure out. Where they could build uh something because they're out there with their tape measures and. Blue tape, trying to figure it out. Um. But I would, on the side yard setback, uh, uh, issue with the decks that are lower than. Uh, three feet or lower, I don't see why we wouldn't just have it aligned with the setback at that point. Why why even make it five feet? It's almost confusing. Usually uh on on those lots that are bigger. That's why we have a six foot setback, right? I mean. Why wouldn't it just align with the the setback to make it easy? You know, why why mess with the five feet, no less than five feet or.
I mean, for some lots, for instance, R one A lots that have a ten foot. Side yard setback, they'd have their deck. Would be allowed to project into the side yard and leave five. So we're looking at upping the three right now. So right now. You need to leave three feet at the property line. That's our existing regulations for elevated decks. Um, stairs and those other elements that I just talked about, the trellises of other architectural features, and we're going to pull decks out of that.
Got you.
Because decks, people are standing on decks, people are using decks, people are looking down from decks and noise is coming from decks, so. Pull decks out of that regulation and say, you know, with three feet is not enough, we want to see them setback. Five feet, um, you know, if it. Mission feels that, you know, it should follow. Um. Existing setback requirements, then. Um, that's the way we. Write that that language, um, but I think five is kind of.
Yeah, because.
Maybe a. Uh, I don't want to have a. Something that we're comfortable with, wouldn't have unintended consequences, I guess.
Because, right, a a large, a larger lot is going to have a six foot side yard setback, so you'd be penalizing the larger lot. Small lot can go as as close as five. And the lar- the larger lot, that we have to, if if you want to just stick with setback.
And also to um access accessory structures such as sheds can be in the ru- the rear yard, and they are required to maintain a five foot side and rear setback, so it kind of follows that that requirement as well.
Yeah, there is here. Um, okay, and and then a taller decks um. I think the threshold of ten feet is going to be really, really tough for any house that doesn't have a flat lot and isn't a slab on grade on the on the first floor. I mean, I'm when I'm doing my kind of a quick calc, you know, and if you've got a crawl space with your eighteen foot minimum to the structure, you're at twelve feet without any slope to the lot. So pretty much most second stories are going to kind of fall in this category. Is that the intention or or do we want to give a with this letter that that we're going to require from the neighbor? Could that could we leave it at fifteen feet and then then apply the neighborhood? The the neighborhood uh letter, because I I feel like you might be getting even more work on top of your shoulders by decreasing it to ten feet. Because I don't know a lot of second story lot uh houses that it's going to be able to be possible with all the other construction constraints.
Uh huh.
You know, get a slope, the deck on top, which is usually more than twelve inches. And then we've got most house, a lot of houses in Corta Madera were built with, you know, little crawl spaces on the on the unless unless you're in the flats.
Yeah, railing is
We can certainly look at that.
A deck railing is forty two. Three and a half feet. Right now with our existing regulations, you need design review for a deck the fif- fifteen feet in height.
But but we're talking about to the
So yeah, and we're measuring that today to the railing. So we're changing how we measure the height of the deck for purposes of design review to ten. But if you if you look at how we're doing it today, your your deck is fifteen feet in height inclusive of the railing, you need design review. So if we measured that fifteen foot high deck to to the railing, what is it's the decking surface? It's fifteen minus it's it's eleven fifteen minus, what did we say a deck?
Three and a half.
So it's eleven and a and a half. But we're capturing decks already that are eleven and a half to surface level and requiring design review. And there's some, uh we could tell you how many that we're doing uh design review for. Um, but we're talking about a change of a foot and a half. And if
Well, I I guess my comment would be that there wouldn't be a lot of uh second story decks that would 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 not require a design review uh process. Um, and if we're trying to kind of simplify it and make some kind of staff staff approvals that that can be applied if the neighbors are in agreeance that that is not a privacy concern, then that that would be one way to look at it. But if if we're looking to get more stringent, then I think that that's the direction that this new amendment is going to go in.
I think we could definitely get some information on what has been happening in terms of um the design reviews we've been doing for Dex projects and those that have not require a design review and just kind of dig some of those numbers up. Maybe get a sense of.
Because if it meets all your design cri- the other sign criteria with lock coverage and FAR and all the other you know, setbacks and all the other criteria we have, and the neighbors don't have any problems with it, then why should we bring it to a design review?
I think that's a fair question. One que- question I would say for staff is like as you get higher with the deck, it's it's a little bit harder to determine which neighbors are part of that agreement. Is a little bit farther could be view and field. So I don't, we we need to figure out exactly even the the heights between three and ten. Be very clear what neighbors have to sort of sign off to that. It gives their approval for it to go through without design review.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely have to have to look at that. And and I think it seems like you don't have a lot of design review applications that are s- to me that are solely decks. They're usually adding on to the building and 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 that includes a deck. And so adding on to that building often triggers the design review. Um, so you know, this doesn't happen a lot.
I think, yeah, I think we've generally seen that decks in the review from the commission when we do are in that situation that oftentimes becomes something that the commission is very concerned about or looks at very closely. Um, and trying to write sort of a, well, you know, again, um or a standard that would sort of not require a design review for those decks that are high above. Um, I think we're just trying to clarify um and make it easier to understand exactly. I put it this way, I think what you're saying is is the intent of how it was drafted is that pretty much second story decks are going to get reviewed by a a design review process.
Yes.
It was kind of so, but but it but certainly, yeah, um, understand and appreciate that not all of those decks may be problematic.
And um I as far as the uh you know, raising the houses and within the floodplain, I think that that's where we're at. I I it's great if you if you limit limit the height um. It it looks, the language to me looks looks good, covers a lot of a lot of ground and gives people a lot of latitude to do things that are uh to their home if they want to modify it. Um two fifty doesn't sound like a lot. My diagram was like, you can't really even fit a master bedroom into a two fifty. So, you know. Yeah. Where you stay at? It's a big hotel. And yeah, I I do agree with that. I continuing uh the the outreach to to for Christmas Tree Hill. There's no reason to have that many additional findings. If anything, we should, I I think I mentioned in the last hearing that you know, we have our R one findings uh or findings for for residential. And then if there is an amendment to that, then for Christmas Tree Hill as an overlay, then there might be you add two or three things because it's such a steep area and there's no parking and they've got those nuances up there, but a lot of the other items on that list are either covered in our existing findings or 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 kind of unnecessary, and maybe were brought about by different administrations, so. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Valerie, what are you thinking about?
Um, well, I think all of the language, proposed language is very clear and it's great work. It simplifies the understanding for the residents. Um, my concern is only about that under two feet, not and not clear with deck um in the front yard, just because there is no regulations to it. You know, people, I I understand that it hasn't been the case previously, but I'm just concerned that the front yard could receive a very large deck that is, you know, two foot six, for instance, or two two foot eleven. And um and it can take the entire up to the setback and you know, it can be loud and you know, as people are using it for the lounge furniture and for parties and so I wonder if um something, you know, if there would be any with limitations to that. Uh, you know, just as an example. Um, and then in regards to this stringency of the goal intended for the ten feet, I um again, it would be great to understand what's the intent. I actually um, you know, if the idea is to go more stringent, I could see that and support that just because um I'm concerned about the structural feasibility when decks do go higher than ten feet. And if people are not doing their due diligence or not having structural engineers supporting the project, it can go very wrong. So, you know, I can see both sides where we ease people from applications, but at the same time, um, does it mean that someone else can just take a hammer and dull the deck that is that feet? Just my concern here.
Okay. Yeah, so um anybody building a deck has to get a building permit.
Right.
Has to be engineered.
But yes, I mean, right, any anybody building a deck over certain, you know, has to get, like you said, has to get a building permit, has to be engineered, has to show the footings are are adequate for. So just just because they're getting away, just because they're not going through design review, doesn't mean the town isn't looking at it for its structural stability.
Okay. And I would agree with Jim.
Okay. Over to you, Daniel.
Okay, thank you. Um, item uh item uh one uh design review threshold. Um uh I would, I support uh changing the language to required from then from not required. I think that makes sense. Uh and I support consolidating the regulations into one section. Uh, I think there's some potential problems with changing the threshold uh in lots R one B and R one C from two fifty to five hundred. And I think the the idea that these are bigger lots and therefore this is less of an issue in terms of design review. Uh, could present challenges because uh when you're building on these hillside lots, um, you don't always, just because a lot is big, does not mean that you can put this addition anywhere on the property. And you could be very well be putting this addition addition within the setback limitation of a neighbor. And five hundred square feet is three bedrooms and a bathroom. So I I really would support keeping the two fifty. Uh, just because it's a larger lot in this particular town with the grades we have. I I think that five hundred uh in some cases is a challenge.
The just to be clear, that R R one B is existing regulations um exempts additions. You know, it it'll, the threshold is five hundred already. And R one, and they have a minimum lot size of um one acre. R one C um is is two hundred fifty square feet and its minimum lot size is is five acres. So our our once, it would just be a change to R one C.
Well, I would argue for changing R one B to five to two fifty, frankly, uh because uh because of the town and the grades that we have.
Mm hmm.
So um Christmas Tree Hill, I certainly support uh making that consistent with the other uh the other zoning districts pending your input from the community. Um and then um uh the thresholds for design review and commercial, not other non residential versus the mixed use. I guess some feedback on on uh particular cases. I mean, I I find the language a little bit uh vague, new or significant. I mean, it was clear, but significant. Now, obviously, we're leaving that up to the planning director. Um but uh is is there some definition of that or is there some terms we could use that would make that a little clearer?
Yeah, I think that that is one thing to note. It it doesn't include, right, any new floor area, so you couldn't expand the building. But yes, I I think what we've seen in certain instances are slight modifications to facades um that um certainly landscaping. Oftentimes new landscape features, there's ambiguity as to whether uh right now by strict definition of the existing code would require design review. Uh, but are oftentimes minor in nature. So those those types of things we often seen. Sometimes we see ADA improvements, which by strict definition, again, currently under our current code would require design review because it's a exterior modification to the site. Um, we've seen one in the case of actually somebody trying to retrofit a um a two story office building by putting in a an elevator, um which certainly is that I'm not arguing that that wouldn't be necessarily insignificant or significant, but it it's a type of examples of certain things we see uh um on our commercial sites that are um debatable whether they're, I guess, significant or not. And those are oh, you know, a lot of times, the, you know, I I any others paint, I mean, paint colors, we've we've by interpretation, if it's around the same. We said if it's an earth tone, it's going from like a tan to a beige and they're relatively close. We said okay, let's not require design review, even though that's that's by interpretation. Um, I think the code is so strict right now that you that argue the other way that it could have should have required a designer view as well. Um, but we were just um wanted to make that simpler there. Uh, any other certain material changes without changing the building. So there's there are, those are examples, everything provide more, but but certainly there's room in this. I think you're referring to the small I, the single I.
Yep.
How to define that a little bit more clearly. I think that's certainly that could, I'll let the other commissioner's comment, but understood the, I understand the the comment there.
Uh and I think um to um uh the commissioner to Margaret's comment um about, well, what if a neighbor were to or a adjacent property owner were to complain, but they're under this, they're not going to find out about it. It's going to go directly to building permit. They're never gonna know this project happens till it's under construction. Is that correct?
Right, right. And any project that, right, does not require a designer view, if if there is no noticing of neighbors for a billing permit.
So that would not probably be a measure here that we could add because they're not going to know about it.
Yes, yeah.
I understand that was, and you can correct me that you were suggesting that if a neighbor or joint property owner were to complain or be unhappy with a proposal, but they're not going to hear about it if there's no design review.
Right.
I mean, I
So, okay, so so my question then is when we're saying design review, we're just talking about design review by staff. Not the planning commission.
Right.
I'm saying that I I guess my comment was that that people who are neighbors and may be impacted should be given the chance to uh even if it's not coming to the planning commission, even if it's going to be rubber stamp or whatever through the staff. I mean, you know, some things are so easy, they're just rubber stamped, but.
Well, any, any time there's concerns from a neighbor, you know, the process.
But how do they know?
Any any designer viewer application, so any any staff level of designer view application. So in generally, you know, two hundred fifty square feet or more. There the neighbors are going to be noticed. And and they're going to, they they contact us and and they contact us im- immediately when when they're when they're notified and and sometimes even sooner. They just hear about it from the neighbor.
So what happens if it's two hundred thirty feet? But it still has a big impact.
Yeah, on the in that case, the the um
The neighbor never knows.
That, but that's not a designer view. I think that's to to Mr.
It's my point is it's never going to get to design review.
Designer view is the threshold for noticing. Yes. So that's important to recognize throughout this entire discussion.
So but this applicant is going to come in and the planning director is going to say that this is not significant. Correct? And therefore does not have to go through design review.
For this commercial property, yes.
Correct. So it's not going to get noticed.
That's correct.
About residential property.
If, again, if it's the, it's that two, it's that two fifty threshold and that fifteen feet in height threshold. And if, you know, the commission feels that's too that's too big and too tall. Um, we can, you know, we can certainly talk about modifying that and acquiring projects that are smaller in general to uh to be noticed and go through design review.
I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying it has to go through designer view. I'm saying that it should be noticed. That that neighbors should be noticed and given the opportunity to say, this impacts my life.
But the problem with that is there's what are they appealing or what are they?
Their next step.
There's there's no discretionary review in that case. So there's no process. It it's a building permit. You it's a ministerial approval. So in that case, there's we're creating a a a, you know, an issue that cannot be resolved through our processes.
Right. So you're you're asking for a notification that's outside of this design review. You're asking about building permit notification to go out. I guess. And and we're talking, this is strictly design review. So that happens one hundred percent of the time. So to your point, you want to know what your neighbor is doing. And if it doesn't reach design review, you don't know about it until it's underway. And that's a separate issue. Um, really, I think.
Right, yeah, it would be, it would be perhaps setting up a another criteria that says building permits of a certain size receive notify or or notify the neighbors. That's that's the tricky part. And we we what what is that size? That's, that's the tricky part, and we, we, what, what is that size? And then once you notice the neighbor that, you know, your next door neighbor is building a two hundred. Square foot addition and they're going to get a building permit for it, we want to let you know. And neighbor complains, then what's the process? Um, they, they can, they, you know, they come in, they talk to us, they complain. But. We can, we don't, because of our designer threshold is two fifty. There's nothing we can do with, with the two hundred square foot addition. As the way things are written today.
This is only a single story, correct? I remember our code, it's only the two foot, it's only in the first level, right? So we're going to talk.
Well, the fifteen foot height rule gets captures the.
Yeah. So imagine then, I'm just being playing devil's advocate, you, you've got an existing house and someone wants to in, in. Enlarge their side yard window and it goes through a staff review and it gets approved, that might have a bigger impact than two hundred fifty square feet. But then we would be requiring notification of every window replacement.
And I think.
So I mean, I, I think that, that at some point we've, there's got to be some kind of by, a line for the by right. Uh, I think that's what happens, otherwise every single modification would have to be. Would, would have to come through.
So what you just said is rather than replacing a window, you're making. A, 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 a huge picture window.
I could do that. I mean, I could do that on, if my, my buildings, I, it still has to go through a staff review, but if, if they, they look at it.
And I'm your neighbor and I really think that you're looking at me in my house. And now you have an even bigger view. And I have no rights.
But, but this particular i- item, Roman numeral three is commercial and not residential.
Yeah, I, I realize that, I, this.
No, but I think that your, your comment was more based on residential, like.
I think it was, yeah.
Okay.
I want to put work in your mouth, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay.
Uh, I think on item four modifications to thresholds for design review floodplain, just the comment about. The defining the height for two stories or being clear about the two stories.
Right.
Um, and then, uh, on the decks. Uh, I, I am not comfortable with, uh, this approval from the adjacent neighbor language. Um, I think, I think it abdicates our responsibility. Uh, is it the neighbor, the tenant, or is it the owner of the property? How do we define neighbor? And what if the neighbor then gets into negotiation with a proponent and starts to say, well, I'll approve it, assuming that you. Put a wall up there and now we're, now we're getting letters from different neighbors with different conditions. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, it's fraught with, um, a lot of interpretation and problems. And so that's my issue with, with that. That alternative to design review. And then I would say for design review, we really want to simplify things. I would say anything over three feet because design review makes it very simple. And I think that the challenge here is that, and again, I come back to the, the kind of topography and, and so forth that we have here that. Setting, in, in this particular case, setting a height limit. Is really difficult then to determine the impact on adjacent property owners. Uh, it, it sounds good, but in reality. I don't think it really covers, uh, covers the issues we're concerned about views and privacy. So, uh, so I don't support the current proposal. Yeah. And, and certainly don't, don't support the. Getting a letter from the neighbors. I mean, again, the neighbor, is it, is it a renter? Or is it the owner of the property? And if the owner of the property is absentee landlord, does that person care? How tall this neighbor's deck is?
Yeah, I think it, it, uh, I would. Ever agree with you and, and on this that it, it places too much. Value or emphasis on the relationship with the neighbor to the applicant, and that's a dangerous area to get into and suddenly. Uh, you got a problem there, stepping back away from it, letting them work it out, but I think there has to be some sort of neighbor. Interjection into this, I don't know how you define that, you know, what is that relationship? What is that? A, a, address of the neighbor's concerns, how do you ask them to join the process without giving them a too much power or. Uh, being clear about what that is.
Well, if there's design review, then there's notification.
Right.
So that, that's helpful.
Just to clarify, I think the, what the written proposal on page eight in italics is, um, would be. I think you would say you would be supportive of if we just crossed out. Written approval from the adjacent neighbor. And then get rid of or and just say design review approval is required for.
This is.
I, I mean, you, you can combine, you can combine one, the second two, but it's basically. Anything above three feet.
Right, well, basically.
Required designer view.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so a four foot.
Uh, I would agree with that. Any commissioners want to input on this item? Written approval from the neighbor. It's, it was just, if it says just design review is required. Then the neighbor gets to input.
Yeah.
Can I just back up to, to the commercial? Property again, because I just thought of an example. Of the example I was thinking of when I suggested that, that Zins Wine Bar, which I listened to the, um. The town council about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when they first put up that outside. Uh, area for themselves, they impacted their neighbors because they took up that whole long sidewalk.
Right.
It's been scaled back since. But I think that. You know, and, and everybody loves it and, um, and that's great. But it did set their tables and chairs in front of other businesses. That might have not wanted them there. And so, as I said, you know, I think it impacts commercial properties. As much as it does residential.
And I'll, I'll just clarify on that, that the, the Zins parklet was done through a different process. It was the, the. Temporary permitting process that was put in place during COVID.
Just using that as an example, that commercial properties, you know, and a lot of them are putting up outside. Stuff. Um, because that's the trend now. Um, and I think that neighbors in commercial properties have rights too.
Yes, and, and like Martha said, putting, putting stuff, I know. Putting stuff that's not attached to your building and putting stuff that's not on your property, that's on town property, is a completely different process. And, and the parklets is, it was a unique, unique animal.
It, it's not governed by the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It's governed by encroachment permits and streets and sidewalks regulation.
But it is a, a good example, put that on private property and propose that, I always think staff will make the call, that's not.
Yeah.
Insignificant, that requires design review. That's sort of where we're thinking about these things, but if you want to. Let's say you want to ra- increase the height of the railing there because ABC has a new regulation, it's now going to be forty-eight. That's an example, some of you say, that's not significant and. And under this proposed code and I could give examples. Well, to all day long, but I, I think I'm hearing that this. Isn't working the way it's worded, it's too vague. Um.
Well, we heard from a commissioner about that.
Alright, Daniel, you shut your microphone off. Did you have anything else you want to say?
No.
Okay.
That was enough.
Um, so.
I got one last question. So about the design review, I know we call it design review, you've got a staff design review and you got, and that gets notified and you've got a planning commission. Notification, and if we're going back to the decks and it's a staff review with. And, and do you guys ever resolve? Those issues with the neighbors or does it always get kicked up to planning commission when there's an issue? So. Uh, I'm just curious if, you know, once we get, uh, you know, a, an appeal to.
But they often, yeah, they, they often get resolved. We, we work extensively with neighbors and we, we talk to neighbors a lot. And before many, many things that you never even see.
Yeah.
And, um, and yeah, I think that's, um, neighbors in generally, in general, they want to get along. They don't want to, they don't want to come before you, be on TV and, and go through this process, both neighbors and applicants. Um, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of give and take and there's a lot of staff time devoted to. Um, mitigating neighborhood disputes, reaching compromise.
Yep, that's the point of the padded room. Okay, so, um, everybody's contributed generally to this discussion. You guys always take great notes. Um, and we went through all of this, um. I'm not going to try to summarize that unless you want us to try to summarize this. Do you feel like you've got some good notes on this?
Tracy is always an incredible note taker. And we have the video, we can watch it all over, we can do it all over again.
But I do think it, I mean, in general, it sounds like. What we have before you in, in most of this language, except where we, you know, there are a couple of. Pieces of language that were picked up on and that need to be clarified. Are really good to go if we put this into an ordinance, um. With this, where we obviously have outreach with the Christmas Tree Hill. To get that squared away. Um, is there any, I would like to summarize any other. We have the deck conversation, it seemed like there's consensus on anything above three feet, those to design review. But in general, there is mostly support for. I know, yeah, for. The rest of it, to say.
I have a question.
Yes, Dan.
Um, Christmas Tree Hill, will we, uh, be invited or notified of those meetings? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, um, I think that what I hear everybody saying is just, they've read through all of this and looked at it and have no. Sort of, uh, concerted issue, uh, with any of it. I think it's very, uh, well presented. And as usual, you guys have done a lot of great, uh, legwork here to get it onto paper. It's a hard issue.
We also heard the diagrams and trying to get some graphics to help.
Or graphics, yeah. And then, right, and then also the, the big next steps of, of discussing the findings.
Mm-hmm.
Haven't delved into yet, discussing the findings and then also discussing retaining walls. With fences on top. Certainly, you know, examples and comments of, of regarding those would be great for, for our next meeting.
Okay, um. That's fabulous. So let's close that item, shall we? And let's go on to Commissioner Reports. So. Margaret, you have a commission, uh, council.
I realized that I went, had gone to a different meeting than the. I just listened in on that one.
Hmm.
But I did go to the, um, the May second. Or I listened to the May second town council meeting, which. Was very easy. Because what they talked about. Uh, that I found interesting, the first time we talked about it was the restroom project in the. But I did notice that they, um. Made some of the changes that we suggested. Um, adding skylights. Adding, uh, and doing wiring, they're going to put in the wiring for security cameras. They mil- moved the building four feet away from the drive aisle. Because that would have been. Or they felt it would be dangerous. And, um. Apparently, the module, this I found interesting, the modular unit. Is four hundred fifty thousand dollars. But once you get. The building site prepared. I guess the transportation and all the stuff that has to take place on site is seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So it just about doubles once you take a modular building and put it. In place. Um. So, but that passed, uh, the, that resolution passed. And then, um, they went through the second round of the housing element. Uh, which is coming back, which. We already went through a couple times ourselves. And they, there was a budget, uh, talk at the beginning, which always reminds me of why I like the planning commission better. It's a lot more interesting. Anyway, that was, that was that meeting, um. That I wanted to.
Great, thank you, yeah, um. But to hear that about the, the restroom, um. We're going to get. The public question, Dan, did you have a meeting you reported on, Daniel, or nothing?
I, I had sent it for Danielle, that meeting. Um. The April eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That meeting was, um, we discussed the. Town council discussed the short-term rentals, that was the primary discussion. And, um, I believe that the comments were taken and there will be, so the agreement was that we should be. Um, not hypocrites, I think that was the main message and just kind of align as. Where the times are going, there are people already doing some short-term rentals right now, even though they're forbidden. Um, so in order to provide them some guidance, um, the town moving was. The reviewing of, um, on how to put the ordinance around the, um, short-term rentals. And to create some, uh, guidelines for that.
Great, okay, so. Another job for staff, right? Okay, does that cover that?
I believe so, that was probably the main.
I, I listened to that meeting very carefully. And the thing that there was a very good, uh, public comment, a woman who lives not in Christmas Tree Hill. But she was the chairman of the committee, the safety committee.
Yes.
And she spoke very eloquently about, um, the fact that. That neighborhood especially was trying very hard to mobilize everyone. Neighbors that knew each other, so that in a emergency situation, everyone knew. Where everyone else was and what their position was. And if there were a lot of short-term rentals, that kind of. Wasn't really the neighborhood, uh, safety i- i- in line with the neighborhood safety needs. And I thought that was a very telling. Comment, she was very, very. Good in when she spoke.
Yeah, and that, that was really great comment, and there was another comment that, um. Also she brought up, I think, about the. Fact that, um, some of the inherited properties currently are short-term rentals. And they are not regulated by the noise, um, the landlord is not living in the property. So, um, the fact that they probably did not pay the tax, right, or they're not paying any. That's right, um, but they're putting the house for the short-term rental. Um, and it creates chaos in the neighborhood. So that was also the comment.
Very interesting point that she brought up too.
Yes.
Really interesting. I was, I, the only thing I was discouraged about at that meeting was that. I think that there, and there were quite a few public comments on both sides. And, and I got the feeling that the town council pretty much had their minds made up before they listened. To the comments, they knew where they wanted to go and that's what they did. And I thought some of the people who spoke. On either side were very compelling. And had good thoughts and I thought, thought that, um. I was just discouraged that. That's the way it seemed to happen.
My personal worry about that, and I brought this up with the town council, was that I literally two days prior to that had an example of. Um, the gas leak in the Airbnb state that. I personally had with my family and two other families. And we had to evacuate the house, um, in the middle of the night. Uh, so. Who's regulating that, that short-term rentals, right? We had to deal with the property manager of the house, the landlord was not available at the time, we had to call nine-one-one. So all of these things happened, again, in the middle of the night, neighborhood probably has been disrupted. Um, so it's just, again, not against the short-term rentals, but is how can we create the guidelines, um, to avoid these situations? avoid these situations and disturbance.
All right, yeah, we're going to get it outside our realm here, but um well, but yeah. So um does staff want to add to any of this?
I would, just in terms of the restroom, they, I think the um uh, council also took to heart the recommendations by the planning commission on trying to get a uh, smaller gauge steel for the trusses in the front of the structure. So that it would feel a little bit more lighter. I don't, I I think that was a comment by the commission. Um, and and also um working with uh Rich Perlstein on a different wings coat wings goes on on the base of it, not going to stucco. I think Rich felt that that would be not as durable. Um, uh, and so it's, but it's trying to find maybe a little bit of a a more not as rugged sort of material where it's um the Tahoe style, but maybe a little bit flatter look to the stone itself, but felt that that was uh going to be uh more durable. So they're going to go with that. Um, that's all I have. Just want to comment on that on the restaurant.
Will we get uh any to comment on the eighty uh uh not eighty, the the short term.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it going to come back to us?
It has to come. Yeah, it's it will be coming, um, because I think this will live in the zoning ordinance, so it will, but is required that the planning so it will be drafted. I think we're going to start drafting it in June.
But when that when that comes here, since we've already reviewed it and given a given our comments on on, is it, are we reviewing it in a different
Yes.
context, like we're only, we're you know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, you'll see the actual language.
Yeah.
See the ordinance written. That's going to be what you're commenting on. Okay.
It'll be a hearing item rather than a study.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing else from staff on that?
Um, the other thing I'll add is we did formally resubmit our third draft of the housing element to the state this last week. And we're hoping to get comments very soon. And if we do, it may be before the commission for a formal uh adoption um next, at the next meeting, both the housing element and also the update to the safety element as well.
Wow. Were were there a lot of changes or did you, are you?
Changes were all fairly minor. Uh, it has been posted to the housing website if anyone would like to to take a look at it. Um, but there, we thought they were fairly minor changes. We addressed their comments, so hopefully they agree.
Thank you, Marla.
That was a tough thing and and everyone did a great job. That was really.
Still there.
No, what? No chick. I don't know, the IJ even said how great Corte Madera was for doing the job they did. So we all know the IJ is like like right next to the German time.
Well, given the number of lawsuits that are publicly
Yeah.
declared, um great, yeah. Um, but what we're left with here tonight are to approve uh the commission meeting minutes of April eleventh, on which there were only three of us here. So that's up to us three to approve. I move to approve.
A second.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three, I.
I.
Okay.
So what happened to the um the other thing we were supposed to look at Oakdale or what happened to that?
Um, four hundred Oakdale Avenue, designer review, that was a preliminary review.
Right.
For a new house. Um, they they're going to return. They haven't given me a specific date. They're working on their on, they're working on things. Say that.
So with that said, let's adjourn this meeting.